One nation under God, indivisible, with every single justice.
Thank you. Now we can open the floor here for our joint meeting. The city councils answer questions regarding the city agreements. I guess Doug or Tammy or Amy do either if you want to start anywhere in particular with any questions you've received or address any of that to start off with or who wants to kick this off?
Do you want to ask Tammy or?
Yeah, so, so Amy, can you give a brief overview of what you're asking from the cities? Because there's a lot of questions from the cities and what they're signing and what the consent agreement actually means. So would you be able to start off just by explaining that to them, what that means?
Sure, yeah, certainly. So the county has determined that it would like to expand its urban renewal program. So that the county is in a position to use tax increment financing to undertake certain specified projects in the county, most of which will be highway bridges and culvert improvements in the county, in the unincorporated county. Now, in order to do that, one of the requirements of the law is that the county adds these rights of way to the urban renewal plan that it has in existence. And the law tells us that when the county is adding rights of way within or within two miles of the boundaries of a city, the county has to get permission from the city to add that property. The other properties that the county is intending to add are windmills in the unincorporated county. Because the county will have the ability to use tax increment revenues from the windmills to help pay the urban renewal projects that I just described. And so the county is seeking the permission of some cities. Some cities are only within two miles of these rights of way. Some cities are within two miles of the rights of way and the windmill. Now, I will say although the county needs the city's consent and the city can give their consent to include these properties that I just described in the urban renewal area. With respect to the highways, bridges and culverts, it doesn't give the county any additional powers other than including these rights of way in the urban renewal area. In other words, the county is not going to have any powers to come within city limits and do anything. The county has determined with, with advice from their bond council, which is me and John Danos, that the most simple thing to do is to add all of the highway bridges, culvert rights of way. Because it provides for contiguity within the urban renewal area. And it just simplifies the process for the county.
Why was, uh, Cassuth County Buffalo Township Economic Development District? What started that and why did they start it?
Um, I can answer that or, um, I think Tammy or Doug, do you, or one of you, do you want to, is Doug there?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, he is.
Yeah, sure.
Do you want to, you?
I'll go ahead. That was requested by Gold Eagle. That, um, this county, the city of Titanca entered into an agreement. Where Gold Eagle would receive some of the TIF benefits. The city of Titanca would receive some of the benefits. And Cassuth County would receive some of the benefits. And the board at the time chose to do that. And that is why it had started in two thousand thirteen?
Twelve or thirteen, yeah.
Two thousand twelve, so over ten years ago.
What are the benefits?
What are the benefits? There's been one bridge that was constructed. There's another bridge that, uh, the board, we've been talking about constructing in that area. There's also roads on that area. The city of Titanca, you would have to ask them what benefits they saw with their projects that they, they were able to construct some projects as well.
We also did the turning lanes and stuff there by Gold Eagle for safety.
There are turning lanes that will pay for it there.
So what, what kind of money are they talking, are you talking? And what really generates that money?
Do, do you want me to address that Doug or do you want?
I don't know if Amy would like to with how it's generated with Amy or whoever.
So Amy already laid it out that the wind turbines are what we're targeting for the property that would be put in under TIF. So with the tax schedule that's already in place, which we're not changing that at all. That schedule, the wind turbines start at zero percent of their valuation in the first year and it ramps up five percent per year till year seven when they're at thirty percent of their net acquisition cost. Since they are coming online over a staged period, the valuation we are looking to capture is the valuation that's not online yet. And that valuation times the tax rate would be the money that they would pay towards taxes. But this would capture it in the TIF and urban renewal area, which then we could designate primarily towards road and bridge projects. So i- in some regards, it's kind of a designated fund for doing infrastructure improvements. In general, should be a pretty positive impact for the residents of this county.
Where would the money go if it didn't go to this?
It would go into the same normal levy rates that we have now. One of the caveats of that is with House File seven eighteen, our income as cities and counties, I believe, is limited by gross dollars with a growth factor. This is outside of that calculation. So it allows us to capture money that otherwise we wouldn't be able to capture. Anyone else seen board?
Grants us more flexibility in what we're able to do as a county for projects. Especially in the second year of the department.
So would that limit, would you put a limit then on cities and schools, what they would get because the TIF would go to you now?
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't take away any valuation that's currently on the tax rolls. It just captures the new valuation.
Right, so any increase though then?
But you wouldn't be getting this increase anyway because it's in the unincorporated areas. So there's, there's no city benefit as it stands today. If, if we don't do this, you guys, the cities, don't get any extra tax dollars. It's all in the unincorporated area anyway. So it's all, the only thing it will affect is our rural basic levy at the county. Uh, for, for valuation wise.
So it affects the school?
The school districts are the ones that, are the big one in that.
Yep.
So, which the state is backfilling currently and that's why so many counties take, use TIF. Or that's the ones that are using it. It's not, I know over in Clay County, they held their public hearings and things for informing the school districts and things and nobody showed up. It wasn't a concern because the state is backfilling other money at the moment.
Currently?
Currently, yeah, currently, yeah.
This is the agreement with Buffalo, the original type, uh, type Gold Eagle and the county. Do, whatever some of the benefits as far as bridges and things like that. The revenue that came in was back split also or strictly just, or, or did, what is the city? Did the city and the county get some of that revenue and Gold Eagle was the split?
Yes, fifty, twenty-five and twenty-five for ten years of Cassuth County receives a hundred percent for final term. It was a twenty-year.
Was there any consideration moving forward with this effort to offer that split as well or anything similar?
We did talk about that and in case that question was asked. The only piece of the puzzle that a city would be able to tax is if there's wind turbines within two miles of their city limits. So like, so I said, that wouldn't apply. But other cities it would for a couple wind turbines. And what we talked about is that if that was an issue, we just wouldn't include it in the TIF and we would leave it on the general tax rolls. So.
So you wouldn't, when you say you wouldn't include it yet, you wouldn't have them sign the agreement and they would still have work done in their area?
No, you wouldn't have the windmills.
Wouldn't have the windmills.
You wouldn't, wouldn't have the, wouldn't have the windmills TIF, but if they didn't agree to the right-of-way consent and stuff, that all ties together. It's all part of the plan.
My question might be more pertinent to me. So on the urban renewal part of it, Amy, the part that is, um, the right-of-way, that would be the county's, but let's say, uh, some business wanted to come within the two miles. The city could still extend their urban renewal area into that two miles and take, just not the right-of-way, correct? The county would have the right-of-way, but the city would have, within that two miles, they'd have the option to collect that TIF revenue, correct?
They, right, so the, the, the county, with, with regard to the rights of way, it's strictly that, just rights of way. Now, if the city wanted to, you know, as, as you mentioned in your example, if a business came to develop and it was, you know, within two miles of the city limits, the law would allow the city to expand or create an urban renewal area. But of course, the same rule that goes for the counties goes for the cities. So when you're going outside the city limits, you would need the express consent of the county in that circumstance.
Even if we annexed it?
And so, I'm sorry, even if what?
What if we annex property?
Well, if you annex it, then it's within the city limits and you don't have to worry about that two mile, that two mile.
Then, then the two miles just, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Only taxable property that the county is proposing to include in the urban renewal area with this amendment are the windmills.
Yeah, and actually that's a great point, Amy. I think, I did have one city council person that called me this afternoon and asked if this would affect their valuation of like just the general city property. And I said, no, it's the right-of-way through the cities, but we're not, we're not listing the personal prop, private property within the cities in the TIF. So I guess if you have any different way to say that or expand on it, that might be valuable. But I think knowing that the city's tax base is not affected here, I think is important.
Right, the, the true purpose of including all the rights of way is to achieve contiguous for the county's urban renewal area. Now, what I mean by that is that they have an urban renewal area in the county that's all touching, right? We have never read this as a, a hard and fast requirement in the urban renewal law, the contiguous rules, but we have seen some decisions out of the Supreme Court of Iowa that would indicate that if you can have a contiguous to, to do a certain renewal area, you're going to be in better shape. Um, and the other thing is these rights of way are not taxable. So the cities that, that might be operating urban renewal programs, you can, any rights of way in your city, you can put in your urban renewal area. The, the county is not going to have any ability to prevent you from doing that. The county is not going to have any ability to come into your city unless, unless there's certain other laws that allow it. I know there's some highway maintenance rules that you all follow that I'm not real familiar with. But the county is not going to have any ability to come into the city and do anything at all to your rights of way.
Jacob.
So, so this would have no, this would have no impact in terms of private utility, uh, valuations? That are for utilities located in the right-of-way?
No, this won't impact any, the, the inclusion of rights of way in an urban renewal area doesn't impact a thing. Other than the county now would have a contiguous urban renewal area.
It, it's just kind of connecting the dots.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
Maybe just one more.
Make, make sure I speak up so she can hear you.
The one, the one property, I don't know, is, 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 is there anybody from El Dona there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, say, the county has discussed including a, some, a, a project that would involve the state, the county fairgrounds grandstand. And so in that case, that, that property would, you know, need to go into the urban renewal plan and the urban renewal area, but that's it. And to my knowledge, that's not passable ground either, so it should not have any impact there.
So my question is, or not really a question, probably more of a statement. I think a lot of the confusion for people here is, is there wasn't a lot of time to look at the resolution and understand it. And I don't think a lot of the small communities have TIF or urban renewal areas and it's a complicated issue. So if you don't have a just understanding of it, it's very confusing and rightfully so. But I guess my question off of that is, is the push right now to get it done because the land needs to be caught in the valuation that it's at right now, so you get the best dollar amount in the future? So it's the push to get this done before December first?
Correct, so for all the wind turbines in the county, if we wait past this timeline of December first for new debt levy, we will miss this year's valuation process, so we'll lose five percent of the value across all the turbines. So we'll roughly lose a sixth of the possible value.
And what is that about?
First year is six.
Yeah, first year is six hundred and some thousand anticipated to come in.
Six hundred and eight thousand the first year.
It's.
Yeah.
It's, it's substantial.
So what do you, uh, they said, uh, projects that, what projects do you think that you spend that money on? That went through by the first of December?
We won't, so we won't actually spend any of that money by the first of December. It would be getting the plan in place that would allow us to build those projects after we borrow money. Because a function of TIF, and Amy can probably explain this too. But a function of TIF is you have to borrow money to build the projects or you can't collect the extra increment from that area. So you have to have outstanding debt to be able to collect the revenue on the backside.
So the county's a big county, I mean, six hundred thousand is a reasonable amount, but who decides where it gets spent?
The board.
You already have a plan on by your investment.
We, yeah, we have a laundry list of road and bridge projects and the possibility of putting money towards the fairgrounds. That's what's listed.
We, I looked at a list. Is that not set in stone or is that just a possibility?
Well, the projects that were listed is not necessarily, we're going to build all these projects in the next couple of years. It's just whatever projects, we need to include whatever projects we could potentially construct or think about constructing in the plan now, so we don't have to amend the plan at a later date. It gives us the opportunity to construct any of those projects in the future.
Yeah, and.
There's no guarantee you'll complete them.
Not necessarily with these funds. They could be completed with federal funds. They could be completed with local funds. They could be completed with grant funds, whatever, so.
Doesn't have to come out of TIF dollars.
Specifically for the road department, Doug can talk about all the different pots of money if you want to get into the weeds on that. But at the end of the day, there's multiple sources for funding for those projects. And this is one option of funding, so it may be built with these funds, it may be built with those funds, whatever. But by putting it in here as an option, it would give the county flexibility on our planning side of it. And if all of those projects get completed in the next X number of years, we may have to do an amendment and add more projects and say, okay, this is the next one we're going to build or whatever. This is just a starting point for projects, but that would be the choices on the table, so to speak, that we would start with.
So in theory, if there were an area that wasn't included or a city decided not to sign or not to go ahead with the agreement, their project still could be completed with one of the other multiple sources of funding. It just couldn't be paid for with TIF dollars.
Correct, but I don't know what advantage the city would have or disadvantage the city would have for not doing this. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not taking tax base away from the cities or any of that. It's, it's just trying to put options on the table for the board. Jacob?
So one of the things that was a little bit frustrating, we got the notice is that we talked about a plan amendment, but we didn't have the plan that's being amended. I was able to pop on Department of Management website and download the plan from twenty twelve when it was adopted, but that's, because I know where that is, I'm imagining most city didn't know exactly where to go to find that. Um, you know, and in there to identify specific projects with Gold Eagle, with the city of Titanca related infrastructure improvements. And it's been a couple of years since I've done, done an urban renewal amendment, but my recollection is you need to have specific projects identified in your plan. It can't just be road, water, or road, so.
We do.
I didn't give you a project list.
It was sent in to your city clerk in the, um, resolution, has a, has a list.
Yeah, I mean, off the top of my head, I want to say there's a list that encompasses seventy-some million dollars worth of projects that are options.
Yeah, it's exhibit A.
That's just the, exhibit A, when it came through, the city clerk, so all it was, was, um, that list.
It's just the land that you added.
Of, of rebuilds, the, the plan that you did send to me when I asked for that separately.
Yeah, it did.
Yeah.
Exhibit A on the count, on the, on this city, the joint agreement was just the legal description. So board, you have the plan amendment now, right, that you can provide to the folks there?
Doug, do you have that handy in front of you, painting?
Pardon me?
The list of projects?
Yeah, I have one, yes.
Okay.
And Tammy, you have the plan amendment, right?
Yep, I sent, you got that to me.
But I.
Yep.
I sent that over last week, I think, so that the board can take action today to set the date for the hearing, so.
Yeah, so I mean, Jacob, we do, we do have a list of specific projects.
Because I, I mean, yeah, whether it's the bridge outside of X community that might be eligible or.
Yeah.
The fairgrounds, what that sort of economic development grant I'm assuming would look like or.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's all listed in the projects.
Well, I, in my experience from our city clerk and maybe I missed an email, but I don't recall getting a list of projects proposed for the amendment.
No, we have to go, we have to go back to the county. We have to go back to the county and then ask for it. Because you're right, Youngin came through with a letter saying, hey, sign this, and a sample resolution and a list of all the windmills in the county. But that didn't tell us much, so we got on the horn to Tammy, helped us out.
Okay.
So we got on the horn to Tammy and to Bert and between that, we then got the amendment.
So can the rest of us get that city council?
Yeah, we can, we can get you copies if you don't have it now. We can definitely get that.
So, so the projects are, see, I have to talk again. The projects are the, um, fairgrounds for up to a million dollars, correct?
Correct.
And the roads and bridges was up to seventy-four thousand million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, just, just with the other, yeah, with the other source of funds, there's a high likelihood other sources of funds will pay for some of those projects, so some of them will drop off, other ones maybe added, whatever.
But that's, that's the total anticipated cost of.
That's the maximum.
Everything in that project.
Yeah, it, it would be the maximum.
Not next year, not five years from now, but within maybe twenty some years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does this plan, economic development plan have a twenty-year sunset that's being amended?
Yeah, it's, it's got a.
Amy, do you want to, do you want to talk to that?
Yes, it's, it's, it's twenty years.
Yeah, so the wind turbines would, yeah, they would have twenty.
That's correct, yep.
And then I guess the other, yeah, the other point to that is after the twenty years it's up, it would go to the general tax rolls too. So, but primarily rural basic and stuff. It wouldn't be city tax bases.
So it, it would be for project, you know, and then you always, you know, just, yeah, you put a high max because it can't exceed. But all these projects, but TIF being able to use for them would go till, you know, twenty thirty-two.
They'd go till twenty forty-six, or no, twenty forty.
Twenty, twenty forty-three.
Twenty forty-three.
If you certify TIF debt as of December one, which is the plan for the windmills that are being added, your first year of TIF collection would be twenty-five, twenty-six, so you have through twenty forty-five.
So th- this plan is exempt from the twenty-year sunset? Was it passed before that reform?
No, that is twenty years.
That is twenty years.
But you're amending.
The, it's twenty, the sunset is twen- twen- the, the, the sunset is twenty years of TIF collection.
So the, 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 the ten years, yeah, I think Jacob's question, I think, is in regards to the stuff we currently have in TIF now, so that would sunset on its own in ten years. But the wind turbines would have their own timeline within that same plan.
Correct, yeah, that's right.
So it's, it's.
So the Buffalo, you know, the original, the original TIF district is like halfway through. So it maybe has ten years left of TIF collection.
So, so they kind of still act independently within the same plan?
Correct, yeah, they have their own, anytime you add property to an urban renewal area, although it acts as one urban renewal area, each TIF district within the urban renewal area has its own TIF collection line.
Perfect, thanks for explaining that. Any other questions anyone's got at top of their mind right now?
When did you guys start talking about this? I wonder if this like?
This summer.
Several months ago, I believe, yeah, this summer at least.
So why did you wait until October to let the cities know?
That's just part in the process. I mean, we had a lot of internal conversations here about it and then had to get information to our legal representatives. And then they followed the process and carried out the notification from there. our legal representatives, and then they followed the process and carried out the notification from there, um.
And this is, this is my ignorance, but, the voters, voters don't have a right to say this, this is something you guys created.
Bloody, I think we, we can hear you a little bit on here, if you're able to mute, that would be great. Thanks, though.
Voters don't have a choice?
This is not something for ballot, no, this is a.
Why is it not for ballot?
That's.
Like I said, I'm ignorant to this, so I can't be why it's not for ballot.
It's, it's not something you can put on the ballot.
Yeah. Amy, I don't.
Authority granted to counties and cities under chapter four oh three of the LIO code.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Jacob.
And if you want really good reading, go read that.
Yeah.
That's what scares me a bit about it. So when, provided my council decides they wanna sign this, let's go the other way first. Let's, let's say my city council doesn't wanna sign this, what's the impact to my city? What's, Doug, what's the impact to my right of way? What happens to P thirty that runs right smack down the edge of my town? Do you not fix it, ever?
I don't know if it's competition, is it their decision?
I mean, let's, let's just to base it, so what, okay, let's say, so, um, gentleman who asked that question, what city are you from?
It's Sway City.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I didn't.
Sway, Sway City, Amy.
What, Sway City, so Sway City, I mean, what would happen is that the county would not be able to include the rights of way within the city, or, um, within two miles of the city.
But that doesn't preclude the county from having the responsibility of repairing that road?
So now, I mean, it, it, I, I, that, I'll let someone from the county answer that, cause I don't know, again, I'm not familiar with how the, the road maintenance sharing works, so, I mean, I, the urban renewal laws, and including the street or not, won't have any impact on, on that, on its own.
But, for an example, like, outgoing, if there's a bridge within a half mile of us, if we had signed the agreement, the county, you know, sort of county bridge, but when they look at budgeting, it would be like, well, if a funding source is available to us, TIF isn't one of them, as opposed to these other projects, we have this as a financing tool. Um, so, you know, it, you know, could impact, you know, decision making in terms of what, what tools are available to fund it.
Correct, yep.
I would contend that in that decision process. The TIF would probably have a priority in the.
Fine, this is a question.
Just wanna make.
You four have to realize that we have to go back and explain this to several of us, have to go back and explain this to a table full of people. So, those that weren't able to be here tonight, we have to go back and explain it to them, and try and come up with either questions that they've already posed, or questions that they may ask, and if that's one of them, we're trying to get all the answers and all the information for them, so that's what was presented to the supervisor, essentially, what's your take on it? You're the four that are gonna make that decision, so if that situation should arise, any input?
So, I mean, Jacob did hit it pretty well, nail on the head there, um, it does impact what funding tools are available, so I mean, I don't have a crystal ball, I can't, but at the end of the day, if we have funding available over here, and we are tight on funding over here, it's a pretty simple equation, um. I don't know.
I'll, I'll ask the, the question I know I'm gonna get from council is, when we give that two mile stretch around our city limits, essentially sign that over to the county, I think is what you're asking us to do.
Just, no, right now.
Wind turbine.
This is, so this is, this is not just handing over unlimited authority on anything, it's including the right of way in our plan. Um, it doesn't, it doesn't change your tax base at all, doesn't affect anything of, I guess, I would say it doesn't affect anything of substance for cities.
Yeah, the first question I got when I tried to explain this was, you mean they're gonna slap up windmill on the edge of town?
This doesn't, this does not, no, this doesn't give us the ability to build a windmill on the edge of your town, or
Do anything.
Run a X, Y, Z, or build anything there, no, it doesn't change any of that, this is just including the right of way to connect the dots.
I hear you.
And we do have, we do have some, oh, did you have more?
Yes, so in your letter that we received, um, the very last sentence is, the signing of consent agreement will not give county permission to undertake any projects within the, with the city limits, um, all fine and good, is, can we get that verbiage in um, agreement that you're asking us to sign, the resolution?
It's just in the code, or in what?
What, what language are you looking for?
What she just read you off the letter.
I think my council would like to see something in the resolution that states something similar, that consent agreement will not give county permission to undertake any projects within the city limits.
Amy, do you have anything as far as like a code reference, or a chap, a section in that chapter that would highlight that, um, that?
No, I mean, I really don't, the, the law is, is so horribly written. Oh, it doesn't, it doesn't say that particular sentence on its face. Um, you know, I'm trying to find, we could add it to the agreement. If, if something that's important to the city.
I think, you know, if I could jump in, I think a little bit of the concern is, like, Chrisy touched on earlier, is an unknown and is confusing for some people, and the public just kinda wants to have a guarantee, so when there's a, a resolution or an agreement that's very legally written, which is understandable, people don't understand that, so something simple that's cut and dry, that makes a clear cut that says, okay, here's the agreement, this is what we're doing, you're not signing your life away, you're just signing for these items. There's not going to be a change, it's going to be, once you sign off on it, there's nothing else that's going to pop up that says, okay, you've already given them permission, so now they can come in and do whatever, and I think that's, the general public, I think that's kind of, it's intimidating and uncertain and scary for them, so just something simple, I understand it's very, very well legally written, I trust that, fully, but something simple might help that move, boost across to other people.
We could certainly include that, there's reason why not to.
Yeah, I mean. I don't have any issue with that.
What do you want it to, I mean, you, you, you can, you tell me what you want it to say.
The last sentence of the letter, is that?
Yeah.
We're going for?
Um, do you have that? And we also got a couple questions in the chat, we'll get to here in a second, um.
Amy, just, just, just to be clear, just to reiterate, I, I think I have it, but I don't, I, I, I wanna have it very clear, so the city, but it is signed with agreement, and the only thing that the cities are giving permission to be done is the list of work that is planned. So should another amendment, or another project be proposed down the road, does the county then have to come back to the cities to get their permission?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
And Amy, uh, what was in your email on October second here to Tammy? The last sentence in there, it says, the signing of the consent agreement will not give the county permission to undertake any projects within the city limits. That's the language that they're requesting to be added in, into the actual resolution and stuff, so. If that would be, if that would be possible to add in, we could do that. Um.
So, so just the.
Then, oh, Doug?
Well, just to clarify, I guess, at that point, so, you know, the project list is in there, it's like, oh yeah, we're good with these projects, and then a year later, amendment's proposed, and it's a project that we don't like, and it's within two miles of the city, already consented, the county can't just go ahead and do that project, we just still have to consent again.
To the new one.
Within two miles.
Yep.
Correct.
Yep, um, Doug, where are you gonna read the chatter?
I think we need to be careful with that language, because Kasuth County does have jurisdiction, if a town has a population less than five hundred people, the farm-to-market extensions in those towns are the jurisdiction of Kasuth County. And if that agreement all of a sudden says Kasuth County will not be able to do a project within the city limits, you might have some sort of a conflict that causes questions in the future, there's ambiguity there.
Now, this is, so this would be specific to the.
Can I? Can I ask a, a question of those that are there and board?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, is it the right, is it the right, is it the rights of way that is giving people the most pause?
Um, I think so.
What if I, what if we changed the description of the rights of way to be added to the urban renewal area, to read all of the public rights of way of all highways, bridges, and culverts in the unincorporated territory of the county? Does that help ease?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's almost the same thing, you're right.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if that changes a whole lot, Amy, um, I do, I do wanna touch on the chat quick here, though, cause.
And I, I would. Because I understand the, yeah, because I, I understand the way the law works, I know that in terms of dealing with the highways, bridges, and culverts, there's certain laws that govern the, that relationship between the city and the county outside of the urban renewal area.
Yep. Um, yeah, that is a good point, that, that relationship is already governed, um, but we do have a couple things in the chat, and one question was, does this include farm-to-market roads, um, from Kelly Fitzgerald? Doug or Amy, which one do you want to respond to that?
The way, you know, the way the language reads is all of the public rights of way of all highway, bridges, and culverts in the, in the county.
Yep, um, and then.
Regarding council meeting.
Yep, and then the next one is regarding the next council meeting, it's not until November fourteenth, and she doesn't believe they're willing to have a special meeting for this item, so then what? Um, they also have a public hearing scheduled for that, for a budget amendment, so, um, Amy, do you wanna, I think you already touched on it before, but do you wanna highlight, if we do not receive signed consent agreements, what happens at that point?
Well, it kinda depends on why you don't receive them, right, like, if you don't receive them because the city is saying, no, we're not signing it, then you just never can include whatever territory closes to that city, you know, or in that city that refuses to sign, you can't include it. Now, if the city is, is unable to have a special meeting, but they're gonna meet on the fourteenth, then the county would probably just delay access to the following meeting, so you're supposed to meet on the twelfth, you'd probably delay action uh, to the, to the following meeting, you know, on the nineteenth, to do your final approval. But until you have the consent from each city, the, the rights of way and/or the windmills that are, you know, within, or within two miles of the city cannot be included.
Okay, so the other option would just be to not have it part of the plan?
Yes.
I know, I know when I was on city council down in Laverne, it was pretty simple, if even if you only got, I'm assuming most councils are five, but you know, even if you had three individuals in town, you can meet at city hall for five minutes after work and, and approve it, I know we did that several times throughout here, but, for different things. I, but if you can, you can, but it's, I don't know, as long as there's five days' notice, but.
They have twenty-four hour notice for your agenda. Wouldn't need five days.
I know, we always did five days, well, either way, yeah.
Your internal might have been five days. Not legal. And then Kelly commented, I think the pause comes partly because we felt blindsided by this and wanted to have it passed in so quickly, um, so I think we could have probably had communication earlier, but we had a lot of discussion here, and then followed it through our channels with legal, and this is just the process that's in the code. Um, the timeline is kinda tight, because there were a couple delays along the way with conversations here, but, um, I guess, I don't feel like this has any negative impacts to cities, so I'm not aware of any at this point, um. I don't know if any of you guys see any specific negatives that you guys see, we could try and address that directly, but, um. Jacob?
So, you know, if you have to incur debt to certify TIF by, you know, where you're gonna, um, certify his debt, um, to collect his increment by December first, I guess, what amount, um, are you guys looking at, because it might not have a direct impact on city budgets, when you take that, whatever, you know, is required to get that increment that you're gonna certify, to take that off the tax rolls, that's gonna decrease your general fund budget, and, you know, what do you do to fund operations? So I guess, what do you, what do you anticipate that fiscal impact would be of coming off the tax rolls that wouldn't be, um, available to tax for the general fund?
So, since we're limited by House File seven eighteen of net dollar, um, growth, I, I don't see any limit there, because we are limited by dollars more than our levy rate, um.
Yeah, but if you certify a million dollars on December first, they're gonna have to take off the tax rolls, the equivalent value for that million dollars to, for it to be redirected there instead of your general.
No, so none of the valuation that would be here is currently on the tax rolls, this is new valuation that'd be coming on, none of, nothing would be coming off the tax rolls.
So, oh, so you wouldn't be using any of the unused increment that's accumulated?
No.
Okay.
No, this is, this is all new valuation that would be coming on, but it's not on yet.
Alright, so it might be limiting your future growth, which is where the house file comes in.
Yep.
Okay.
Limited either way, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're limited either way, that's a good way to put it. Is there any other specific questions or concerns cities have, or feel like this might be negative towards you guys?
The, everything, the, the little bit that you just described there, I'm, I'm assuming you've consulted the Department of Management thoroughly at length to make sure it's not going to have an impact for us.
Tammy has, you've, you've got, been, stuff with Department of Management?
Not on this.
No.
Not on this, just with, with our attorney.
So, the Department of Management in regards to House File seven eighteen, I mean, I, I think we all understand that pretty clearly, um.
Well, thinking and knowing are two different things, so.
I, I know I under, I know my knowledge of it, yeah.
And that's why we have, that's why we have Amy and John and, and Heidi with Northland Securities, um.
Cool with Northland, yeah, this is, this is a separate.
They're there for county finances though, but what he was asking, and I think what we're all wondering is, could it potentially impact the cities? And we can't answer that.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't asking if it'd impact the cities, it was just like, it would, how would it impact the county's general budget?
No, so, since, since we're limited by the total dollars coming in, it's, it's not, it's kinda two separate things there, um. If we kept the same tax rate and we had the exact same valuation, we would generate the exact same total dollars, which is what we currently have. This is new valuation, we're not taking valuation off.
Have you, have you reviewed that at length with, but, you know, phone calls to Department of Management or no?
I don't know what kind of review there would be for that, this is, this is not changing our current. Yeah, this is not changing our valuation at all that's on the current tax.
And, and I understand that, all, all I'm asking is, have you, are you sure the, the four of you that are sitting up there, are you sure you have asked enough questions to be a hundred percent certain this one to operate the way you think it is?
Yeah.
Good.
And I know I personally have reached out to three other counties that use TIF and visiting with other supervisors, I'm on another board with one of them, um, to buy reference Clay County. Um, but, uh, it's, it, it's not. Um, I mean, it's a unique tool, but it's not a unique tool to the point where there's nobody else do, using it. So it's, there, there, the information is out there.
Right, right, I just know. Sure, I just know sometimes there can be, if you can do something the exact same way someone else did, and then your timing is different, it can affect your finances.
Absolutely.
So that was the only reason of laying out the specific plans and making, you know, there's already non-financial issues, I think everybody is aware of that, so don't, let's make sure we're not gonna have anyone else.
Yep. Jacob?
Is the EMS, uh, property tax, is that considered part of the other taxing entities that would be subject to capture?
So it is, I, I have had, actually, I have had conversations with another supervisor who was involved with, um, kind of. Cleanup legislation when there was a lot of stuff done with TIF early on, there was, I don't remember exactly which levy it was. It might have been something with Pebble for the School or something, but, um, it was, it was not a protected levy when TIF was originally used heavily. Um, probably thirty-some years ago, and they went to the state legislature and specifically talked about that and got that included as a protected levy. Um, so, I think that will be something we will need to talk with legislators about this year, but in regards to EMS, our, um. Kinda back to the same token, we're not taking any valuation away, so we wouldn't be reducing the dollars that EMS would get. It just wouldn't have as much growth, and I guess.
So, so the EMS levy is subject to TIF?
It would be, yep, yep. Cause currently Gold Eagle by Tyke is not paying for the EMS levy.
Is there some? I don't know, have you read the law? Is there some oversight of this whole thing? I mean, when I read this, I'm looking at, I don't know, seventy-five, seventy-six million dollars?
Yeah, there is oversight, every year you have to file a report and that's in the state management and state of the union part. And you have to show them the now was like, yeah, how it's been done and, um, had now was on, um, the first.
That comes from the supervisor.
The county has, the county has to do it, we're probably gonna be jamming that has to do it.
So the county has to report?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, we do already.
Yes, it, yeah, everything by December first.
Yeah.
An internal moving of all that money?
It's a, it's a separate account, it's like, it's not considered a special revenue account, but it kinda is, it's got its own funds. It's always based on everything that you do, TIF is kept all by itself, so nothing goes near it.
Yeah.
That if you collect money for TIF, it has to be spent on TIF.
She's right.
I'm, I'm flat out, I'll be honest, I have some hesitation in essentially turning over seventy-five, seventy-six million dollars to you guys who are struggling to manage an eight million dollar budget. County budget, so, please understand my hesitation. Something like that?
Um.
That's why I wanted some oversight.
I could say a lot of things, but I'm not going to right now.
Do you think people are wrong in thinking?
Yeah.
They're not getting any money, they're not getting seventy-five million dollars.
No, that's, that's.
They're not even gonna manage, that's a proposal of what they're gonna do.
That's a lot of.
They're not, they're twenty years.
Twenty years.
It's, it's only years, but when they do a project, let's say they came in with a, I'm just gonna use easy numbers, a million dollar project. That's what they're gonna certify for debt that year is a million dollars. That debt money's gonna come to them from the state through TIF, it will come into that TIF account, they'll have a million dollars. And that's where they have to spend it out, and when they do that report, if they did a million dollars, that report better man shot that they took a million and this time a dollar.
Right, yeah, I think something that people get.
That's, that's a pretty simple, I mean, there can be a little bit left in the TIF account, but, but that might be interest or things like that that grow in.
I would tell you the general public out there would have some concern with the budget issues we've had and now we're signing on for one, so, just gonna voice my opinion and I did. Thanks.
I understand.
I would join and add my voice to that because I've also heard that in my community, so. I think that's a fair assessment.
Alright, and.
What's the downfall if you don't have ten by November twelve or fourteen?
Um, it, well, kinda like Christie said, if we don't do this and certify, um, debt associated with it. One, we don't capture that new valuation that's coming on from the wind turbines.
You're saying on the cities end, I think.
Are you saying for the city or for the county?
I'm talking the county.
Oh, the county, oh.
So we would, we would miss out on the five percent new valuation across all the wind turbines that would be coming online. And, um, in the same token, we're still gonna be limited in our dollars coming in by House File seven eighteen. So, the money that we have available to build roads and bridges and do other projects in and around the communities is going to be limited, um.
Be the same as this year or last year?
Same or worse, yeah, so this is, this is another tool in the toolbox and, and actually other state association meetings. I mean, Tammy might have heard some of it at the last conference, but there are supervisors from a lot of counties around the state talking about using TIF. Because it is one of the tools that is not limited by House File seven eighteen. Um, it is, as, I mean, Carter even talked about it, it is used in other counties very successfully right now. But due to that House File seven eighteen legislation, it will probably become more prevalent than it ever has been, um, going forward. So, we're not the only ones having this conversation right now, I'll just say that.
How much was the total revenue that was gonna be lost in the first year, as you said earlier, but I just.
Six hundred. Six hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-seven cents.
That's what we would be projected to get, not what we would lose.
Correct.
Um.
Is that, is that the?
So it'd be five percent of that if you lost that in the first year?
It, no, it would be five percent of all of the valuation of the turbines.
Right.
So you're gonna say six.
Uh, and then that multiplies by your levy rates and stuff to get your dollars, so it's, it's substantial.
So the six hundred thousand is the potential loss?
For one year?
Essentially, yeah.
Right, right, yes, for the first year.
For the first year, and then it'd be.
It would.
You lose that five percent of your revenue that's off of the windmills forever.
Because.
It, it would be more than that.
The second percent of seven, seventy-five million or whatever it is, not six percent and that's the figure it is.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, it, it would be substantially more than six hundred thousand.
And then that revenue would double the following year, because it would be up to ten percent then, yeah.
Jacob?
Yes, thank you for the information, I appreciate it, may God bless Kasuth County, the super fighters, the marriage and everything else.
Thank you.
And I may ask sincerely, was it very important and I'm smarter on board?
Yep.
Have a good night.
That, that's six hundred thousand, that's the new assessed value that's gonna go on, that's how much you expect to collect from the.
Dollars, dollars collected.
First year revenue.
First, yeah, first year revenue.
That, yeah, that's how much we can certify toward the project.
It's like, they don't know about the.
No, no, that's what I'm saying.
That is, oh.
All that new, all that new valuation that you've built up, that valuation then goes back into your general fund?
If we, if we didn't, yep.
Yep.
Yes, back from that TIF district, if you didn't do another project there.
Correct, yep, and, and the other.
So you don't, you don't ever, you're, you don't really lose valuation, you're just putting it in a separate pot. Like a beach bucket to spend at the beach, that's what you're doing, so, we're, yeah, well, let's make it fun, let's make it fun instead of roads. Go to the beach with it, so that's your money to go to the beach with, and you can build all the same castles you want with that money. And do all the skydiving, water diving, whatever with that money. But you can't, you can't now go over to the park and swim and put in a swing set, cause you're only for beach money, that's all you could use it for. So that's what that money, whatever that project is, that's what they're using it for. But it allows them to use that money to make sure that stuff gets done. Because now, when they're putting it in that pot, they're saying they're gonna do tho, those projects and they're gonna work to get them done. I'm not saying they're gonna get them all done because prices rise, things rise, but they're gonna get more projects done because that money is dedicated to those projects.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the, the idea behind TIF, it's to help you grow. It's to help you grow and expand and have opportunities for businesses to come in. That's the idea behind it, if it's not managed well though, like you said, it can be a nightmare. So it does need to be managed well, but the state, I will say, did not used to manage it well, I'm gonna say that. But now they have a good Department of Management Ted at the state, he knows everything about it that you definitely wanna know and stuff you don't ever wanna know. So.
Yep.
I think the reporting is more critical than it used to be.
And there's nothing to force the supervisors to use this money towards a TIF project in the future, they could decide we're not gonna do any of this, they're not certifying any of them.
Yeah.
Well, and, and that's a good point too, because if, if we said, hey, we're collecting a short seven hundred thousand in the first year, we wanna do one section of road for seven hundred thousand. And then we don't do any more projects after that, we can't collect the money if we didn't borrow for it. So if we don't borrow for specific projects, it's like it's not even there, um, it, it doesn't, it doesn't get collected and just. Sitting up in an account collecting dust or something like that, it, it, you have to have debt to be able to collect the revenue. So you have to incur debt and build that project and go through all the motions to be able to collect the revenue on the backside.
That is a much bigger bang for your buck, cause you're collecting those other levies in the rural area, primarily the school district that would, otherwise the county wouldn't be able to get it. Which then the schools, at least in their current, they get made whole, paid back through the state.
Yep.
So when can those, they discussed a final draft that includes the planners, a lot of received email, it was just a plan that changed after that. The agreement is the final?
What do you mean, final?
Well, was there new language gonna be added to the resolution, that we would get a new resolution, which new language, when would we expect that and, and, um. But if you didn't have the plan.
Some of the cities didn't give a plan.
Um, if you didn't get the plan, I know Tammy and Doug both have that, I'm sure one of them can provide it to you if you didn't get the full, full text of it. With, if you wanna look at the list of projects, we have all that, um, that's not changing from tonight or whatever, we, we've provided all that, um. I don't, I mean, as far as changing language in one sentence, I mean, if that's absolutely critical, I don't know, I mean, we can. I don't have a big hesitation there, but I also don't wanna create problems that we didn't have, like Doug was saying with, um, potential other conflicts, so I guess. Is that a big concern of everybody's or? Just, I don't know. Doesn't, doesn't seem like that big of a concern, I guess.
I think as long as it's like, any project amendments also have to come back to the cities.
They do.
You know, I think that, that would be your opportunity to say no.
That's already built.
Yeah. That's already built into the structure of the law, yep.
Oh, does this meeting count as the formal consultation for, with the, the other entities?
No.
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 So will that?
No, we set that for November twelfth.
The public hearing, public hearing.
So, this, this, this is Amy, the, the county is only required. To invite to the consultation session affected taxing entities, which is just three school districts.
Yep.
Okay.
So this is, I mean, this is above and beyond the requirements of the law. Information to you guys as cities, but you're not affected as taxing districts.
And that's good to know, cause it's like, yeah, that has to be, you have to send the plan, it has to be by mail, and so for, or, yeah, cause.
Yep. Yep, good question.
Is the date correct on the bottom of page two?
What date is that? For the public hearing or, I don't know what page two you have there.
Oh, the connection with the points in it. I'm reading one, plan.
Alright, um. Any other final questions, Jacob?
I also, uh, something needs to be further specified and, and maybe this is on the newer version which I didn't give on the exhibit A. Uh, it references Worth County in the, uh, in reference to the turbine locations. And then it says all real property comprising the Kasuth County fairgrounds, I, I don't know what that means necessarily. So is that gonna get a legal description, because there's four parcels out there, two are owned by the fair board, two are owned by the agricultural society, one's owned by the Methodist church, so. Didn't exactly, there needs to be a legal description for actually what that area is.
The law allows for a general description, um, especially when we're not adding property to a TIF district. Which they are not adding this property to a TIF district. Um, folks at the county, if you could provide me a, um. A separate, um, description of the ground that you wanna add for Algonah. Um, I'll get you updated joint agreement. Probably be distributed if it references Worth County, that's my fault. Um, but yeah, I mean, if, if Algonah wants to see a more particular, um, you know. Description, just go ahead and send it to me. From anybody from the county.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, if. Alright, if not, um, thank you all for coming. And if you have any other questions, I guess, let us, let us know and we will do our best to answer them as quickly as possible.
And if, if you go back to the council or even prior to your next council meeting, if it's something where you want one of us to just be present, just please reach out and, and maybe we could work something out, schedule a line or whatever.
The problem is, is like even for us, it's, even if we're, however they decide, it's, it's a, because it's a delay and I understand you have timelines. We all understand that. For cities, we have to follow them too. But you essentially just threw some of the cities' lap and now you expect the cities to all scramble and try and, can you try and get together a special meeting? I can hardly have a regular meeting at this point because I have people that have, are in the field or I've, I've got two of them that are in the field and then I'm, then I'm down to three. And this is not a topic that is ideal to have made or voted on. Yeah, can we do it with three? You're right, we can do it with three. It's not ideal. Especially if it's not controversial and there are people out in the public that are gonna have questions. So nothing you can do about it now, too late. But now you're thrown in this lap and saying, the first thing I heard when I walked in the door, Kyle, was, essentially, and you said it, if you don't sign it, you're not getting work done. Well, really?
No.
You could have started the meeting with, hey, we're really sorry we put you guys in a time crunch. Instead, there's not been that one from any of you. You just expect us to jump through the hoops and then on top of that, if you don't sign it? And, cause I asked you that directly. We weren't going yet and.
Well, we, we talked about that as a board when we had, um, discussions and workshops on this. If there was any cities that did not want to consent, whether it be with the turbines in that area or roads, we just said we'd take them out of the plan. That's just the fact of it.
It's not what we said earlier.
That is what I said. We would take it out of the plan.
And I said it wouldn't get worked up?
I did not say work would not get done.
It's fine, it is what it is, but again, there was no apology, there was no nothing and just get it done. Round your people up, get them together. You guys won't do a last minute. It's very hard to get you guys to do a last minute. You expect everybody else to jump through hoops into that. That's frustrating. And you not even to acknowledge or offer an apology is even more aggravating, but.
Just to add to that, when we have special meetings, that comes with cities' money, because we have to pay the council members and. It does.
I think, I think that everybody listens to what Lucius is saying. It's very frustrating for the people who work in the offices and lots kind of things happen and we're trying to get people there and we realize what needs to get done. But we don't have enough information to get them without doing a lot of research ourselves. And that takes time too. So I think if the lessons learned from this, it's, you know, if it's gonna affect us down the road, if you could get an email out or somebody can say, hey, this, this may affect you in the future. I mean, I've been doing this a long time and I know that it's a lot easier when I give a little honey to people than when I don't. Because they get upset because they didn't know about something. You can solve a lot by just keeping people informed. Then they can ask questions and, you know, just put a note out there, hey, this meeting's about this. You may wanna be here. It, it gives the public a little notice about something or us. Um, and, and granted, we should be watching your agendas as well. I am one hundred percent guilty of never looking at it, to be quite honestly truthful. So when we get frustrated at the cities when people don't come, I'm sure you did too here. And you're feeling like, hey, we put it out there, we put it out there. But sometimes we're all busy, so if we can do that little extra sometimes, it's gonna help everybody and smooth a lot of, uh, tension that, that builds up because of it. Very much so, guys. And I'm going back to the beach. Anybody wanna join?
How you guys know why I stay so cool? Christie, take care.
I give a box of honey.
I'm just, I'm just saying, Tammy, for every, for everybody there that's gonna get a new copy of this joint agreement because I had a typo in there when I prepared it, that, thank you for pointing out the Worth County reference. That is not what we wanted. So Tammy, I sent you that new agreement. If you could just email that out to everybody and it's, everybody can watch their emails, um, for that updated agreement. And then Algonah, um, will work on that, the fairground description if, if that, if you prefer something different. Is that what you prefer?
Yeah, yeah, if, if it just stays like that and maybe just make a real simple map showing the outline that contains all these parcels, you know, just as a reference, cause I think just to make sure that's clear of what it contains and not contains.
Okay, Doug, is that?
Yes.
That's something you can put in there? Okay, and then I'll give you the Algonah one without Worth County.
Alright, perfect.
Gosh, that makes me mad. I apologize for that.
And then we'll get out those old projects.
Yep, yep. Yep. Alright, well, if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll sign it.
Any discussion or final questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you all for coming.
Uh, do you.
Thank you, Amy.
For the county, do you, do you, folks, can we, can we say offering?